I've got 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, March 24th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. Like to welcome and thank everyone for being here this morning. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comments? Just the presentations. If it's okay with the court, we'll go ahead and move on to our presentations. I believe we have three that are presenting this morning. We'll start with the first one, and it's from Frontier Direct Care. Please identify yourself for the record.
Great. My name is Joe Wilson. I'm the Executive Vice President of Growth for Frontier Direct Care.
I'm Sasha Crane with Frontier Direct Contracting.
Okay. We're going to pass out a few materials real quick to guide us through the conversation.
And by the way, you know, you're limited to five minutes for each presentation.
Great. If I can present on three things at once, is that 15 minutes?
That's fine. That's fine.
All right. Well, all right. Great. Thank you very much for having us. Again, my name is Joe Wilson. I'm the Executive Vice President of Growth for Frontier Direct Care. And in front of you, there's a couple of things I'm going to talk us through real quick. The first thing you'll see is probably on this booklet, I should have inserted the page on that page that shows our facilities. What we do ultimately centers around three core tenants of a business model that delivers massive savings to companies on their employee benefits through delivering proactive direct primary care. The first tenant is direct primary care. What happens is we work with your county to identify your employee census and build a facility near site that offers privacy. In addition, that facility is shared site, so other small businesses, large employers, school districts, cities in the area can use that same facility as well, giving them an enterprise-sized resource for small business efficacy on their costs and healthcare spends. The second part of that is through direct primary care, we're able to handle about 90% of somebody's lifetime healthcare needs: small acute illnesses, pediatrics, women's wellness, men's health, those things that are easily taken care of, as well as your diabetic and chronic disease management. And so what happens is ultimately, you're going to have maybe 10% of your life where you're experiencing surgeries or, you know, high-cost care specialist scenarios. We offer direct contracting for that. So that's the second part of it. That allows us to really pay for things with cash. And as you all know, here in the Valley, cash is king, right? And so when we're able to do that, we pay the specialist providers right here in Rio Grande City, right here in Starr County, to show them that we're going to keep healthcare dollars local and incentivize and grow the actual gross domestic product of this area, right? We're not sending out those healthcare dollars to hospital systems owned by public shareholders in New York. They're staying right here in the Valley. The third part is obviously direct pharmacy. We know that pharmacy spends are one of the biggest cost drivers, and so we do direct pharmacy, offering your employees 1,000 free generic drugs, mail order, no cost to the county, no cost to the member. For that, the members get $0 care, and when they need specialty drugs, things that would typically cost the county maybe $24,000 a month or $5,000 a month, we procure those at typically half the cost, sometimes up to 90% of the savings. The long story short is we deliver a net savings. To give you an example, in the city of McAllen, they started before us spending about $561 per member, per month, across 3,000 members for their medical and pharmacy claims. The year we came into their plan, they spent net, including our fees, that were $2 million for them because they're a larger employer, right? They spent only $361 per member, per month. So you can imagine a $200 savings times 3,000 times 12 months, and that's the bottom line. We would drive savings, better outcomes, and better healthcare for your members, and downstream, you see savings for 10, 20 years. Questions?
Any questions? Where are you all based out of?
We're based out of Harlingen. So we were founded in 2018 here in Harlingen. We've got about 150 employees in the Valley. We've got about a dozen locations across the state. We work with cities like the city of Farr, city of McAllen, city of Brownsville. We just were in the middle of implementing in Hidalgo County, as well as Landor ISD in Austin, and several employers in the Dallas market as well. I think the biggest part of that is everybody goes, hey, it's a great strategy and it seems well, but we guarantee the savings. So we come in and do a full analytics report, set a benchmark of where you're spending, where you're trending, if should we not do anything different to your health plan, work with your consultant or broker of record, whoever that might be, to collaborate and build a really good health plan that delivers on those savings, and then we guarantee it. So if we don't hit that mark, we pay you a check for the difference.
So in essence, you know, if I understood correctly, you're not offering any health insurance or anything like that? It's just a, I guess, administration of what we have?
So you have your health insurance plan, right, through UnitedHealth or Blue Cross, whoever that might be, or Aetna, and you still keep that plan? We bolt onto the side of it, and your members are incentivized that if they go through United and self-select where they want to go, they're going to pay the same copays and deductibles they've always paid for your current insurance design. But we incentivize them because our care is so affordable for the county, oftentimes using the same facilities and same doctors, just on a direct contract where we pay them cash. And then our own employees are the providers for their primary care, and when they come through our clinics, their care is absolutely free because we're saving the county so much money. To give you an example, on a brain surgery through United Healthcare, it was going to be $220,000 at Baylor. We called ahead, got a cash price for $70,000. At that point, the county goes, hey, thanks for using Frontier to navigate your healthcare journey. You saved us $150,000. We don't need your $2,000 copay anymore. Go get healthy, right? And so we really expedite that, and they have a concierge experience where they've got a dedicated primary care provider that journeys through them whenever they need something more than just primary care.
Sounds very interesting.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? Thank you all very much.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it. Next presentation is by Salasada Insurance Group.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners of the Court, Judge, thank you very much. My name is Dion Chavez. I'm the Sales Manager for Salasada Insurance Group.
You had one on this, Field Manager for Salasada Insurance Group.
We want to thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief presentation today. I'd like to speak a little bit about our history, experience, and staff with Salasada Insurance Group. We specialize as a general lines agency that manages health, dental, vision, life, disability, and various ancillary lines. Our agency has been in the business for over 20 years with offices in Brownsville, Harlingen, Weslaco, McAllen, and Edinburgh, with 20 salaried employees and over 50 contracted 1099 agents. We currently service a number of school districts in the Rio Grande Valley, as well as municipalities and a large block of commercial business. To name some of the groups, city of Brownsville, city of Edinburgh, city of Kennedy, city of Laredo, city of Lyford, city of McAllen, city of Rio Grande City, as well as city of Palmview, city of San Juan, city of Three Rivers, and city of Weslaco. And some of the school districts would be inclusive of Brownsville ISD, Point Isabel ISD, Mercedes ISD, McAllen ISD, La Villa, Ed Cow Chelsa, Progreso, Santa Maria, Hidalgo, and Rio Grande City Gruya ISD. Our groups range in the case sizes from three pairs and upwards to over 7,500 employees. Additionally, we currently provide collective support to over 17,000 employees in the Rio Grande Valley with our enrollment systems, and we have locally-based administrative teams who provide needed back office support to keep everything running smoothly and efficiently. How our firm provides the best value to our client base? SIG uses a range of benefit carriers such as Blue Cross Blue Shield, Aetna, United Healthcare, Humana, Assured Benefits Administrators, to name a few. Additionally, we provide a system of technologies in order to bring innovative and creative solutions to our customers' needs. We have basically recommend the use of our Employee Navigator system, which I've included in the Statement of Qualifications that we've handed out this morning. You'll find that Employee Navigator provides a simplified and complete end-to-end benefits administrative process. In addition to our local IT support, our services will include the streamlining and management of employee enrollments, providing easy-to-navigate service portals, and the improvement of employee communication around compliance and relevant benefit information. Furthermore, we help with eligibility tracking for hourly employees and that around 1094 and 1095 reporting. Also, a benefits and integrated payroll interface will be created to sync demographic and deduction data. Lastly, we configure and create specified secured electronic data interchanges, otherwise known as EDI feeds. And we can configure and create these specified EDI feeds in such a way that they are designed to sync up with the particular carriers and companies that you work with to update employee invoicing, which allows for reconciliation audits. So finally, we offer a no-fee approach to our services. If we are provided the broker of record on the benefits being offered by the county, our focus and approach is to help save both time and energy by our quality approach to benefits administration. With that in mind, and to that end, we feel very confident that choosing SIG as agent or broker of record for Starr County will be an excellent fit for your employee benefits as we have a proven track record with a longstanding years of service and experience to our customer base throughout the Rio Grande Valley of South Texas. Once again, we do thank you for the opportunity to present before you, and we very much hope that we can meet again to further discuss our solutions and bring both savings and value to the employees of Starr County. So with that, I would like to just ask if there might be any questions with regard to anything that we've handed out this morning or anything I may have said in my presentation.
Any questions, comments? No, but we thank you for taking time to coming and presenting your company. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Likewise. The next presentation is by Reina Network. Ms. Petra Reina.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Petra Reina, and I'm the owner of the Reina Network LLC. And I'd like to introduce our team, you know, George Lassaro.
George Lassaro, Vice President with Volcom Consulting Services. My son, George W., couldn't make it this morning. He's president, but I'm here representing the company.
And Jamie Longoria, a business consultant as well.
Our focus, you know, is a team, you know, that we focused on economic development. We are able to go into a community and pretty much assess, you know, what is it that is needed, you know, for economic development purposes. We have done everything from business parks, water and sewer, and Mr. Lassaro is an expert in that. We have set up revolving loan programs, you know, with small communities. We tailor our plans with what the community needs. In this case, like I said, our focus has been primarily rural communities, and until lately, you know, we've started branching ourselves out to central Texas. We've done projects pretty much all over Hidalgo, you know, Willacy, and Cameron. Recent projects that we're doing right now is we have three industrial parks going up in Hidalgo, and we have finished one in McAllen because the interest in the Valley is warehousing. You know, they need coal, dry, or light manufacturing. And like I said, we have done this, I've been doing it for 31 years, you know, so we have extensive knowledge of the area. And we'd just like to offer the opportunity, you know, to Starr County to see if we can help in any way. And I know these are challenging times, you know, because of the chaotic atmosphere that is in DC. But we've been fortunate enough because we have good relationships with a lot of these federal agencies that in some instances, it's like, even though the craziness, they're asking us to prepare applications and submit them. EDA has been a very good partner with us. And like I said, you know, we just welcome the opportunity to do that. And I'll let the team say a little bit about their background as well.
Thank you, Petra. And I know that I've had an opportunity to meet some of you, and I've been working in Starr County for the last 35 years. So combined between me and Petra, we almost have 70 years of working up projects across the whole state of Texas, using various resources to bring grant funds to your communities. With everything, like Petra indicated, with everything that's going on in this country, some of those agencies are shutting doors, so, but there's other agencies that follow under the mythology of our present, our present country, our present, our present president of this country, and that includes EDA and USDA. For those folks, it's business as usual. Like Petra indicated, we work with different counties across the whole state of Texas. Your neighboring counties Zapata, Jimwells, Jimhogg, Clayboro County, Brooks, Willacy, up into the East Texas county areas, Orange, Jefferson, Caldwell. So we're working with a lot of communities already in the state, and we have a good batting average with respect to bringing funds to counties for different things. Lately, we worked up fire mitigation grants up to $10 million to, that brings equipment to counties to fight fires. We've done a couple of those. But right now, the initiative is to get pipeline, project applications in the pipeline under EDA and USDA, and basically, we're here to offer our services to you. I mean, we're here in your backyard. I'm based out of Harlingen, and of course Petra is out of the McAllen area, and we would just love the opportunity to come and analyze what the county's needs are and see what we can do to help you bring some of that much-needed grant funds to bring some of these projects to fruition.
Well, briefly, I'm not sure how much time we have, but Jamie Longoria, 18 years in business and economic development. I work alongside our team with George and Petra with grant writing and economic development. I'm a certified business valuator, so I also help with feasibility studies and overall assessments of the need on the areas that we are tasked to analyze in order to bring those federal, state, or foundational funds. We're a team, and we've been successfully assisting other communities, and we look forward to the opportunity in helping your community.
And the only thing that I want to add is that we're the kind of team that brings these services to you all. We also bring the funds that will compensate us for the service. So anything we do, we don't get paid unless we bring those grant funds.
That was going to be my question.
And, you know, and I know that with the way budgets are, that's important, and that's our skin in the game, and we want to help Starr County where their needs are.
Any questions or...
Do you have a handover or a contact?
Yes, we're, as soon as I get back to the office, I'm going to email each one of you a copy of our profile. Okay? So you'll have all the information in there.
And we're willing to come and meet with you, Judge, or the Commissioners, on a independent basis to see what your needs are and your precies. And like I said, we're working with other counties, and we've done a successful job, and we just want to offer those services to you all.
Well, we, again, appreciate you all taking time to come and present to us, and I'm sure we'll be in contact.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Looking forward to working with you all, and you all have a wonderful weekend.
Likewise. Thank you. Bye-bye. Is there anyone else that needs to come before the court at this time before we continue? If not, we'll go ahead and continue with our agenda. First item is the approval of the vendor's list. Ms. Alanis is...
Motion to approve, your honor.
Second. Moved and second to approve, discussion. Honorable members, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is claims.
Move and second to approve, discussion. Honorable members, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. I guess in reports, Ms. Alanis, do you have a report that you want to give? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have my monthly report for February 28, 2025. Okay, page one, I provide the cash summary for the month of February with the general fund ending cash balance, $5,941,543. Roden Bridge cash summary for the end of the month, $1,647,773. Our payroll clearing account, we ended with $426,677. Moving on to page two, I provide the budget summary for the five months ending on February 28th. Revenues for general fund, year-to-date collections, we have $11,733,271. I'll move on to page three. I provide the expenditures for general fund with the year-end totals. On page four, year-to-date expenditures, $9,855,939, with a total surplus of $1,877,333. I'll move on to page five, our budget summary for Roden Bridge. Total year-to-date revenues, total revenues collected year-to-date, $4,233,941. Year-to-date expenditures for Roden Bridge, $3,256,888, with a total surplus of $977,053. I'll move on to page six. I provide the enterprise funds, budget summary for the international bridge. We have year-to-date revenues collected, $1,325,581. Total expenditures, $1,594,787. Total deficit, we have a negative $269,216. Our gas system, we have total revenues year-to-date, $484,029. Total expenditures, $376,460, with a surplus of $107,569. Our transfer station, we have year-to-date revenues collected, $674,378, with a total expenditures of $1,116,727, with a total deficit of $442,348. Our debt service, total revenues collected year-to-date, $600,153. Total expenditures, $178,505, with a surplus of $421,648. I'll finish off with page seven. I had the debt summary ending on February 28th. Total debt outstanding, $9,503,724. This concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Any questions or comments?
No. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alanis. If it's all right with the court, I'm going to skip item number 19, and this is an action item to approve the revised service engineering procurement procedure.
That is correct, Judge, but I just want to clarify that this procurement policy change is only for TechStop projects. It's only going to be for TechStop projects that we have.
And this is what...
This is, it's to solicit engineering services for RFQs and/or RFPs for TechStop projects.
Okay. And this particular policy is pretty much dictated by TechStop?
That is correct. It has been approved by TechStop, Judge, but we needed it approved through our Commissioners' Court for them to get it approved through TechStop.
Okay, and this has to do with a bridge, Roma Bridge?
Part of this engineering services and policy does refer to the Roma Miguel Alaman Bridge.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. Honorable members, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Anyone else that needs to come before the court? If not, next item is the action item, and this is a proclamation for World Down Syndrome Day. Board of Regents, Ms. Guzman, is she here?
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to be reading a little bit of the World Down Syndrome Day in Starr County. Down syndrome is a genetic disorder caused when abnormal cell division results in an extra full or partial copy of genetic material from chromosome 21. People with Down syndrome make significant contributions to life in Rio Grande City, Texas. They participate in the workplace, take part in religious activities, create art, music, and dance, excel in sports and recreation, and pursue their studies in schools, community colleges, and universities throughout our city and county. World Down Syndrome Day is recognized internationally as a day of raise awareness and celebrate the many accomplishments, contributions, and talents with Down syndrome bring to their communities. Tomorrow, March 25th, we will celebrate World Down Syndrome Day, a day to raise awareness and promote the rights and inclusion of people with Down syndrome. I encourage everyone to participate in activities and events that promote awareness and understanding of Down syndrome. Let's work together to advocate for the rights and opportunities of individuals with Down syndrome, both locally and globally. Thank you.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. Honorable members, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you all for making time to be here with us, and we appreciate the work that you all do for our children. Item 11 is also a proclamation, and this is to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Good morning. On behalf of the Starr County Attorney's Office, the Child Welfare Board, and Child Protective Services, we thank you for having us here today. In Starr County, across our great state of Texas and throughout our nation, we recognize that our children are the greatest hope for our future. Every child deserves to grow up in a safe, nurturing environment, free from harm and fear. Every year, the month of April is dedicated to raising awareness about the importance of protecting the safety and well-being of children. During this time, we also honor all of those who work tirelessly to safeguard our children, including our CPS workers, the Child Welfare Board, the Starr County Attorney's Office, the 229th Judicial District Attorney's Office, law enforcement, Child Advocacy Center, victims advocates, healthcare providers, educators, counselors, foster parents, and community leaders such as this honorable court. By working together, we can create a safer and brighter future for all children. We respectfully ask that you sign the proclamation declaring April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Starr County, and we'd also like to invite you to our vigil on April the 10th. Thank you.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you so much for coming and making time to be here, and certainly a very worthwhile cause, and I know that you all do a lot of work for our children, and we thank you on behalf of the Commissioners' Court and, of course, the citizens of Starr County. Is there a motion to approve? Moved and second, discussion. Honorable members, aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item is a resolution, to approve a resolution and sign the resolution for funds from United Way. Is anyone going to give a presentation on that? I saw someone walk in with a United Way. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Lily Lopez Kilale. I'm the President and CEO for United Way, and it is my honor to be here today. We wanted to officially recognize this Starr County for being recognized as one of our top 10 companies during the 2024 campaign. This would not have been made possible without your support. I also want to acknowledge Ms. Lori Perez and Ms. Lucy Renteria and Mr. Montalvo for their support throughout the campaign, and all of the directors throughout the entire county. I also want to mention that our Board Chair, Larry Gonzalez, was, since his regrets, he wasn't able to be here with us this morning, but we wanted to make sure that we took time to be here to thank you very much for your support. These funds that we raise here come back to Starr County. We fund, obviously, the Starr County Victims of Domestic Violence Program. We also fund scams serving children and adults in need. We're running the VITA program, the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, right now with the City of Rio Grande City and Roma ISD. This is to help individuals who earn $65,000 a year or less. They're having their income tax repaired absolutely free of cost, and we'll be running the program all the way through April 13th. We have programs like the Back to School Shopping Spree. I know Ms. Fuentes helps me a lot to recruit volunteers during the beginning of the school year to help children prepare them for school, and many other programs that we help to support here. We fund, we work also with the Starr County Memorial Hospital, and we provide funding to help families that are unable to pay any of their hospital bills. We've helped with the foundation grant there as well. We also provide funding to your food pantries at each of your precincts and a number of other things that I'm not going to review, you know, I'm not going to be able to, I don't have time to go over all of those items today, but we just wanted to thank you very much for that and wanted to see if we could take a picture so that we can also promote it throughout our two-county area.
Sure. You know, and before we take that picture, you know, I do want to thank United Way for all your help, and I am aware of, I'm not aware of everything that you all do for us, but I am aware of quite a bit of things that you do, and one thing that you stated, and I think it's very important, is that most of the money, if not all, the money that's donated to United Way stays in Starr County to help our own citizens, so we appreciate that. And I apologize for not making your morning presentation. Mr. Montalvo called and invited me, and he said it was going to be a lunch, so I said, yeah, I'll be there. And then he says, no, it's at 7:30 or something. I'm not a morning person.
Oh, okay. That's good to know.
I said, well, I won't be able to make it. But I did want to be there to thank United Way for everything that you do for us.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We'd like to take a picture if we could, please.
I have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Okay, well, we'll go ahead and go back to our regular agenda. Next item is an action item, and this is to approve a resolution in support of the Border Zone Fire Department Grant, number 5497901 for La Casita Volunteer Fire Department.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is also a action item, and this is to approve or to open a new account for Texas A&amp;M Forest Service by Commissioner Perez.
I need to recommend no action on this one, except if you get a, actually, you already have an account.
Okay. So we already have an account?
Yes.
Okay, so you want to retract your motion, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
And you want to retract your second. Okay, so no action needed. Okay, thank you. Item 15 is an action item, and this is to approve, I guess, the cemetery for Precinct 4, Commissioner, is that correct? Okay, you want to make a motion for that, or?
I told them to.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 16 is also pertaining to the cemetery here in Rio for Precinct 4, and this is for the fees and regulations.
I told them to.
Moved and second, discussion.
I'd just like to mention, Judge, on the regulations, they are subject to be changed by this Commissioners' Court if needed to be.
Okay. Have they been reviewed by Mr. Montalvo, the attorney?
They're the same ones that...
As Roma? Okay. Yeah, that had worked out very well. Okay, any other comments or questions? Do not, Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And then 17, also pertaining to the cemetery, and this is to open a bank account. Moved and second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 18 is an action item, and this is to approve a master cooperative agreement between the Sheriff's Association and County of Starr.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Items 20 through 22 are budget amendments, Ms. Alanis. 20, 32, I'm sorry, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 33 is a budget correction.
Yes, Judge, it's an order.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. It is 10:43, and pursuant to Section 551.074, we will now go into executive session to discuss order salaries. We'll be back shortly. I've got 11:54, and we're back in open session. We only had one action item, and this was order salaries.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second. Oliver, please, aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.